All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Wayland School Committee meeting. We're starting at 6:03. We have the administrators and school committee members present here except for Ellen Greco. And we have Christina Rodrigo via Zoom. She is participating remotely. And we are being recorded by WACAM. So I'm going to offer up comments from anyone about positive things that they've had happen?
I always have so many positive things.
Keep it to one.
Okay, all right. I attended the Clay pit Hill Art Show last week. It was lovely. The art teacher there did such a fabulous job of compiling all artwork from grades K through five and presented it in the cafeteria. It was lovely. The kids had a great time and the families were so proud. So it was really, really fun to be there.
Awesome.
I have so many more if you want me to keep going. I'm kidding.
Okay. Christina, you have anything?
Um, yeah, can you hear me okay?
We can. Can you guys hear me?
All right. Um, well, I attended a movie night at Locur and it was very nice to see all the kids kind of on the floor with their popcorn and snacks, enjoying the movie and enjoying each other's company. So that was very nice. And on a more serious note, I know that Locur and Clay pit did their safety drills this weekend, last week. So I'd like to thank Brian Jones and Emily Charton and the other administrators and teachers for keeping our students organized and, um, you know, practicing with them so that, you know, they can be prepared and calm if they ever need to do it. So thanks to them.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to move on to public comment. Is anybody here going to make a public comment? Okay, moving on. We are going to, next on our agenda is a special matter for the school choice hearing. We're going to conduct the school choice hearing and vote to adopt a resolution to participate or withdraw from school choice for the 2022, 2023 school year. It is 2023, 2024 that we will be making a resolution on. I am opening the public hearing on school choice. Um, we do this hearing every year prior to June 1. Um, and after our preliminary discussion, which happened in May on the 10th, um, we have made decisions in past years not to participate in school choice. Effective September 1994, every city, town, or regional school district is required to enroll non-resident students under the choice program unless the school committee votes prior to June 1 not to participate. The section of the law states, in part, "This obligation to enroll non-resident students shall not apply to a district for a school year in which its school committee, prior to June 1, after a public hearing adopts a resolution withdrawing from said obligation for the school year beginning the following September. Any such resolution with said reason shall be filed with the Department of Education, provided, however, that said department shall have no power to review any such decision by a school committee." Does anyone here want to speak on the matter? Anybody on the committee? All right. We are going to take a vote. Whereas the Education Reform Act of 1993 requires the enrollment of non-resident students under the school choice provision unless the committee votes by June 1 not to participate. And whereas the school choice provision takes money away from the sending district and awards it to the receiving district. And whereas Wayland's per pupil expenditure is greater than the maximum allowable reimbursement, which means Wayland taxpayers would subsidize each choice student. And whereas once Wayland accepts a pupil, it must keep the pupil through graduation, even though Wayland's demographic situation might change considerably. And whereas it is possible that a number of students could return to their sending districts or otherwise leave Wayland, thus creating a potential income loss. Now hereby be it resolved that the Wayland School Committee respectfully declines to participate in the choice program with the provision that should surrounding school districts subsequently and prior to June 1 decide to accept provisions of school choice. The Wayland School Committee reserves the right to do likewise in order to protect its fiduciary interest in this matter. So we're going to take a roll call vote. Christina?
So a yes vote is to withdraw?
Correct.
Yes.
Erin?
Erin Muller, yes.
Alan Greco is absent. Erin Gibbons, yes. And I am going to close the public hearing. All right, so next up, acting superintendent.
Thanks so much. I'm going to go a little bit out of order. I would like to invite Allison Mizuguchi and Michelle Cole and Hayes Hart Thompson to come up and do talk to the committee and to the community about a high school pathways grant that we have been awarded and, um, and what that's going to look like at the high school for next year. And I will, I will scoot out of the way and let you all.
Thank you for having us here tonight. So we are discussing tonight a really exciting new program up at the high school. It's an innovation career pathway. This is a project that we started in the 21, 22 school year. Um, it really kind of started us in very preliminary conversations between Allison and I, um, just kind of regarding the programming that we had at the high school and how could we incorporate some more industry-based courses here at the high school and give some students some real hands-on experiences regarding specific high-demand industry within this area? So we worked with Mass Hire to identify what are some high-interest industries in this area? So it was technology, engineering, life sciences, business. Um, so then again, we spent the year talking about what we currently have at Wayland High School. And we already had so much and wanted to kind of put it together into a pathway that would give students very specific high-demand career skills when they leave Wayland High School. During the summer of '22, Haze put together a summer program. We called it Innovation Design and Engineering Academy. It happened over the summer up here at the high school. Highly successful, tons of participation, engaging. Um, it was incredible. And the students, their feedback was that they wanted it longer, they wanted it again. Um, and they gave us very specific feedback regarding continuation of this program. In the fall, this past fall, we started this year-long project where we decided that we're going to move forward with trying to get a designation as an official innovation pathway, which is recognized through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So in the fall, we wrote a planning grant, which I presented, I think, two meetings ago. We were approved for a $25,000 grant to start the process in preparing for an innovative pathway at the high school. We got approved, which was super exciting, and then invited to continue on with Part B of the grant. Part B of the grant, very lengthy process. Um, it took us more than half of the year to, um, we had to now envision a program for this coming school year. Down to the nuts and bolts of schedules, courses, teachers, um, signing up for the program, everything, what everything's going to look like. Tons of work, tons of collaboration. Haze took the lead. Lots of conversations happened here at the high school. I would attend meetings. Allison attended meetings. It was just a full team effort. So we applied, we submitted our Part B, we got approved. So now Wayland will have their first designated innovative pathway up here at the high school. Um, great response from kids. Haze is going to kind of get down to the business of what this is all about and what it's going to look like. So we're super excited to present this to you tonight and to the community to celebrate this new innovation career pathway that will be offered in the fall.
Can I jump in? So I'm Hayes Hart Thompson. I run the innovation program at the high school. Well, it is actually next door. If you want to stop by and check it out. Um, so Innovation Career Pathway is based out of our space, Wayland Exploration Lab for Design or WELL. Um, we were able to actually build out the space with Wayland Public School Foundation funding, which was amazing to get that support. And our real focus is empowering students to make social impact through sustainable change. So what this looks like right now is we were approved through DESI to have a business and finance innovation pathway. Um, we were able to collaborate this our second year working with Boston University. We're working toward, working with UMass specifically to make sure that our students not only are focusing on career skill building and durable skills, but also what for a university connection might look like in these skills. Um, we accepted 57 students. We had 50 incoming ninth graders apply for this program, which is awesome. Thank you. Um, we had incredible pouring out of students that are currently here, so we were able to accept 57. Um, we might expand the program just because of the numbers success. Um, and for our investing in the creative economy is our most successful registrator for students. We have over 150 students registered for investing in the creative economy. Just to show you the need, we're trying to improve meeting that need, but we are still barely meeting that need even with this expansion, just because so many students are interested in this idea of building career and building their durable skills in business and innovation. So that's been really exciting to accept those students. And in FY '23, we were able to pull together about 75K of funding through Mass Hire, through planning grants, as well as the Wayland Public School Foundation for a second year. So we've been able to garner a lot of support, and that's not even looking at FY '24, where we hope to get more funding. So our real focus is bringing ideas to reality. It's imagining students through project-based learning and experiential learning. Um, and as you can see here, it's a number of different disciplines, so we don't just work in the STEM space. Um, we really try to imagine it through how can we make sure that every student in every classroom in every discipline is accessing this type of learning that's incredibly hands-on and is open to student-led learning? So we're really big fan of that at WELL. So in the student experience, it's technically a three-year pathway. Many students will do it throughout four years. Um, in the first year, students will take our introduction to innovation course, which we're currently running, and then potentially go to that summer program that Michelle mentioned in year two. Um, they'll take four credits of a business or innovation course, and that now actually includes our computer science program, which we're really excited to include them in this process. Um, and then they can attend IDA Academy again or complete a summer internship, which we just started this year. Um, we have about, just in a very quick turnaround, we got our application approved in April. We were able to turn around about 10 students with paid internships this summer. So we're really excited both in marketing space, the engineering space, and then in that health and life science space. And those are all paid internships. And then the year last year, students will take four more credits of a business or innovation course and complete their capstone project, which they can do through one of our business education courses, or take an additional course for capstones. That looks like an independent project that's 100 hours with some sort of teacher support and some sort of impact outside of the high school. We have some amazing projects right now, such as a clothing brand for Black micro-influencers, a Pokemon Go-style app that students have built out actually in partnership with Stonehill College. So students are making some amazing post-secondary connections, all the way to engineering, which is with Pedalize, which is a modular phone charger, where as the students spike, it actually charges their phone, which is pretty incredible. That's been a two-year project that students have invested into. Uh, we really focus on skill building. So again, those collegiate connections, those internships and summer program, but also making sure that we are certifying students. So if they decide to take a gap year or do an associate's degree, that they are building a durable skill that is actually licensed. So say in 3D printing or GIS mapping, that students can walk away with things that they can really put on their resume and validate their high level of skill building. So in FY '24, uh, this is what our courses look like for this pathway. Um, and again, we just added computer science officially, which is really exciting. And then in the next year, we hope to kind of really expand and build out a single course for capstone and then add a course called Engineering for Greater Good that will allow students to really focus on that hands-on manufacturing level of business and design. Um, and then again, end it through some sort of capstone at the end of their experience. And again, we have the actual pathway experience, summer program, and summer internships that all run out of this innovation career pathway through DESI. So, thank you.
So I, maybe I can back up a little bit, and because that was, that's a lot of, a lot of exciting information that largely relies on pieces and parts that were already here. Right? So when Michelle was talking about brainstorming, um, which was a really exciting process for us as far as where are there pathways for students that already exist here? And without even trying, we have a lot of ways that students are building skills toward, not even career pathways necessarily, but ways of thinking that of course opens students' eyes and develop particular passions that they might have that will take them into their post-secondary years. Um, so it was a really fun and enlightening process to sort of connect dots. And we realized quickly that what emerged was, among other potential pathways, this, our business program, um, thanks to Fred Lehman and sort of a tradition of just excellence in that particular area, um, has been hugely popular for a number of years. Um, there was a really neat synergistic connection between Haze and Fred as far as this entrepreneurial, project-based, hands-on, how we are preparing students to think in the future about building things, creating things, solving problems. And we had this amazing space that Jay Moody sort of created out of an old computer lab that invites students to use their hands and use their minds in very different ways. Um, so all these pieces were already there. And then Michelle, whom I credit for sort of like, hey, there's this thing called innovation pathways. It was fun to sort of plug in the pieces and then realize like there is, there is a pathway here and there's funding to then invite students into things like paid internships. Then Haze is already developing this innovation summer experience for students. Um, anyway, it's really, um, it's been a really exciting and invigorating experience as the building leader to sort of see where we're headed with this and to imagine different ways of offering learning experiences for students, particularly for those who may not necessarily find their strength or their best space sort of in a traditional classroom setting. Um, they may find success using their hands and solving the world's problems in a very different kind of learning environment that's very connected to these ideas around design thinking and business and finance in this particular sense. So.
So I was wondering, ICE is the ICE, the same ICE, right?
Same ICE, yeah.
And I, I guess I wondered, Michelle or Haze? I don't know. Hi. Can you just describe, just give an example of the paid internships and then tell us like what happens in the summer? Like what is the summer program? What do they do?
Absolutely. So for paid internship, that looks like work-based, uh, work-based learning plan that Mass Hire, which is our kind of partner in the innovation career pathway, they had to officially partner with us, write us a recommendation. They help us identify, um, businesses in the community. So Reliant Medical Group is one example, where students, um, you know, get an internship where they're actually working on face-to-face clientele and imagining what it might look like to be in a public health or health-based career. Um, and then my job as kind of the innovation pathway coordinator is create a work-based learning plan where they understand how that corrects, connects to their career goals. And then at the end of the summer, we do a reflection and I sign off for Mass Hire to actually pay students for their work. And then our summer program, which mostly targets not necessarily our younger students, but students that might not be ready for an internship. Um, we invite in industry professionals and recent college grads to teach a series of courses, um, that go from biomedical engineering to the psychology of business to social justice and media. Students will take these courses and then within three weeks create a project or a venture that they identify through their courses that they take. So students will spend the morning taking a really niche course. I got to teach biomedical engineering last year and psychology of business. Was an amazing, amazing experience. And then the later half of the day, we work on leadership building, project management skills like Agile Framework, and then actually have students build this out and then show it in a demo day at the end of the day, which Michelle attended last year. And it really ranges from students writing, um, uh, books about philosophy to building a prosthetic hand, to designing an app about if you were the president of the United States, how would you judge political decisions? So it really is wide open. We have, um, professionals from the code, from Deloitte to the State Department. So it's, it's really a wide wealth of knowledge that students can access through the summer program. And like Michelle said, I was blown away by the success. I didn't think it was going to be successful. It was, um, and we're really hoping to run it again this next summer.
Sounds great. So is it, is that something that just allows more students to participate? Or is it something that students who take the course during the year? Or is it, I mean, I'm jumping in here, but it seems like students just sort of become part of this program and then there are certain things that they can do. It's like a major, I guess, in college or something like that, right? So the summer program, does that open it up to kids who don't have that opportunity? Does it expand accessibility?
So we have a mixture of students, right? So sometimes it's students that are in our pathway and they're like, I would do this 24/7 if I could. Or we have students that would like to experience it and then decide if they want to take courses like ICE or capstone. Um, so it really ends up being a mixture of students. So some of the students I knew from my courses, some I'd never met. So it, it definitely opens up more options. And in terms of student feedback, they've identified that doing project-based learning in the school year is amazing, but often they can't dedicate the full time because they have, you know, thousands of commitments going on. It allows them the space to really do a passionate project that's led throughout the summer. Um, and those are often the students we see that are excited to have an opportunity to focus on a Paxon project. Um, and those can be students within myself and Fred's courses or students that are just kind of want to get a taste of what the program actually looks like.
Super exciting.
And I guess this is for you, Allison, is, uh, do you have to be in the program to access those classes?
You don't. No. Right. And that's, that was, that was actually a very kind of an important part of this, was making sure that access remained available to students who did not want to commit to the pathway.
Yeah.
And in order honestly to continue being all things to all students, we are going to, at some point, need to expand our business program from a staffing perspective. We can nudge, nudge. You know, we want to make sure that students have equal access to those courses, just as we want them to have access to jewelry and metalwork and, you know, creative writing. So, um, so, so they don't need to commit to the pathway. And if they do, they will have a thread as they move through these courses. And it's not a ton of courses either. It's, it's not as, as sort of dedicated as like a college major, but it is a great sort of analogy. They still have room and space to explore other things beyond the pathway and have a full high school experience, of course. Um, but those who do commit to the pathway will start to develop skills and sort of a mindset around solving problems that loops on itself as they're moving through these courses.
And as we kind of shift into next year, um, we do need to have a board. So we have to have an acting member board of parents, community members, teachers, um, that are within the field of innovation, design, engineering. So we have a few committed members already. Um, so I just kind of put it out there. Um, if there are folks that are ready to, willing to volunteer for this board, it's really crucial because we take their feedback. So how can we best prepare kids for the field? So they're the professionals that are currently in the field. They tell us, hey, we need students ready to do this. And then we can tweak our programming here to make sure that when kids leave Wayland High School, they already have an advantage and can do some of these programming that kids, when they're in year one of college, they already know how to do it. So we are looking for board members so they can reach out to.
Hit up our alums. What was that? You should hit up our alums.
Yeah.
And Michelle, how are you taking like applications or names for that board? There's a few people that come to mind.
So just reach out to any.
Just have them, you know, one of you?
Yeah.
Okay. It ends up being like a kind of a, not interview style, but kind of a, is there a collaborative thought process on methodology and helping students? And, um, we've had some really amazing conversations with parents that are in the industry that are just excited to share their experience. But it's usually just kind of a conversation. Is there kind of a collective thought process on how we pursue things and how we think about things from that design thinking mindset?
And it helps build our pipeline for internships too. Um, where we've had, we now have this opportunity where Mass Hire is paying for our kids to do this work. So if we can continue building this pipeline where we can send kids, um, Mass Hire is even paying for any Boston resident, like we can find internships that are out of the Wayland area and paying for them to do work in Boston. So I mean, we're looking for partners everywhere, so.
So the internships, are they, do they actually go to the workplace or is it?
Yes, it virtual. Yeah, they go to the workplace. It depends, right? So if it's, um, we, most, our Reliant Medical Group contact is in Framingham, so that's super easy for students. But, um, we do accommodate students that like need, um, we have two students that are doing remote just because logistical concerns, but often if they would like to travel, we're able to have them travel location.
It's really great.
Yeah. It's like overwhelmingly cool.
I'll take that compliment.
And we have, we have a program tonight, so we have 100 people coming downstairs tonight for incoming students. So after this, we're going downstairs to do this presentation again and just welcoming our families.
I feel like I should scoot down there after. Um, I, I will say, when I think of the Wayland schools, this is what I think of. This is, this is the kind of vision that I was hoping to see. And we've felt it all of our years here in the district so far. So this is just really, really amazing. I've sat on the foundation for the last five years. So it's really fun to watch this continue to come to life and to continue to be enhanced and added to. It's, it's just incredible. Um, when I attended the Rising Ninth Grader Tour, I came back and asked my daughter if she wanted to sign up for the entrepreneurship class. I'm like, that sounds so cool. And she was like, mom, that's cool to you. Um, she might have a different path, but it sounded absolutely amazing. All the parents in the room were like, this is so awesome. We, we had this when we were in high school. So just incredible work. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to light.
Good luck downstairs. You're still there, Christina, right?
No, totally. That sounds great. Yep.
All right, so Madeline O'Leary, our rep to the school committee. This is her last meeting with the school committee. Um, we will be finding a new representative for next year. Um, but I really want to thank you for being a part of this. You've done a wonderful job representing the students at the high school, but throughout the school system. So it's been wonderful having you be here. And I will now turn it over to you. Give you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you for this opportunity. It's been amazing to come here and tell you what the students are thinking. And I really enjoyed getting to connect with a lot of new people through this. So thank you.
Please feel free to share that with your classmates and other students. You know, we're fun to you around.
I'm sure there will be a lot of interest in this mission. I think people are interested. So, yeah, there's really just two things that have come up recently. So in the month of May, that's really kind of a heavy part for AP classes. So mostly seniors are the ones that are taking the advanced placement classes. It does apply to some juniors and even a few sophomores too, depending on the class. But May is the month when the tests happen. So that's kind of, it's a little bit of a stressful time. Um, but the students who do take AP classes have days when they take the tests for those classes. And these tests can range usually even like four to five hours. So you have to be there before school starts, like 7:40 even, so close to an hour before school starts. And then the tests usually go, or you're in the testing area until either like noon or 12:30. So it kind of, it stretches for a long, a long time. And the people that I've talked to, myself included, I was taking a few of the tests and I was talking to my peers after the test. And the same thing that kind of kept coming up was people felt just really tired and kind of like drained for the day and then would have to go to classes after. So you would take this test and then go to either like between two to three classes after. And people kind of were wondering, because the schedule for midterms, obviously it's different because all of the grades participate in midterms. But how that works is you'll be in the testing room, you have to be there for an hour and a half, even if you do finish early. And then you have two hours to complete the test unless you have extra time. So same for the AP test, you have to stay in the testing area even if you finish early until that a lot of time is up. Um, but for midterms, once you take that one test and it's just an hour and a half, you can leave for the day. So you don't have any more classes. You have the rest of the time to study for the following day in that test. And so I think kind of just that logic, people were thinking, okay, well, could this be possible to apply to days where there's AP tests for those students? And obviously it wouldn't be a day where everyone gets to just get out early, but to kind of have that in-school excused absence applied students with a test that day so that they could have the rest of the time in the day to study, um, for tests coming up later in the week, because they usually, they tend to be sometimes even back-to-back days of testing. Or sometimes students have a test in the morning and one in the afternoon, and it can get very, very hectic. So that was one thing that came up from a lot of people and, yeah.
I can say, my daughters, we had this conversation, my daughter is a senior as well at a different school. She took an AP test and I don't know if this is an argument for or against it, but she was tired at the end of the test. but she was tired at the end of the test shift, so she ended up skipping her first class in high school, then the class afterwards and got in trouble. So she was in the same boat and made a decision not to go to her class.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, it's pretty common. That was kind of the same thing I was hearing. No, yeah, so it was, it was a common feeling though, not, not common that a lot of people like were to skip, but just-
This wasn't in Wayland.
Yeah.
We know your name.
Yeah.
Oh, she got in trouble for it. Oh, the teacher sent an email and I said, whatever you need to do, like go ahead and do it. So sorry, maybe I'm sharing too much.
Just endorsing skipping.
I'm not endorsing skipping.
You're making all the parents feel better is what you're doing.
So that was just the first thing since it's kind of, it does take up a large chunk of the, the school day. And then as opposed to the midterms, you go back to your classes instead. So that was just an idea that a few people brought to my attention. And then the second thing, I've talked about this before, but I recently had the chance to meet with Dr. Misucci about it. So security at the high school, especially this year, a lot of people have kind of been thinking about that idea more, especially since we already have student IDs, but we don't use them for anything. So it's kind of just a card that you have, has no use, but the teachers do have them and they can grant access to different doors in the building. And I just had been thinking about the idea of giving students IDs that also can grant access to buildings. And then Dr. Misucci was talking to me about this and saying it is like an ongoing discussion with administrators about how to, would it be possible to implement this? Would there be an extra cost, you know, given that if students lost the IDs, you would need to have a system at the high school to replace them and not have to go through a whole process somewhere else? So I've just been curious and I've talked to a lot of people about this to get their opinions. And I think students have expressed that they think it's a good idea and would increase feelings of security and safety at the high school, but that it could just be an inconvenience. And if you lose the card, for example, would you be able to get in, you know, things like that? So I think just the one thing that I was really wanting to hear from Dr. Misucci is how that would work. You know, would you be able to like replace the cards here or would it be just a big pain? So she did give me a really nice update that is being talked about a lot more. And so I just wanted to bring that up because I know some students watched this and their parents told them. So I think this is one of the first times that kids will be hearing that's kind of maybe in the works a little bit and yeah.
And Mr. LaFleur, I think you can speak to that topic, right? That this is something that we are very happy-
Hey, we want to ask a bid for exactly what you're suggesting and we should have a contract tomorrow. So there will be some work done over the summer, including production of the actual badges at the high school.
Great, wow, that's great. I think people will be happy about that for the year, so.
Is it part of the Innovation Pathway Business section?
It's not, unfortunately. Capital appropriation may last year, so we're actually executing on it now.
That's great.
Yeah, that's really all I have, just those two things. But thank you so much for having me be able to come and present and bring some student ideas. I really appreciate it, so I've enjoyed it a lot.
Can I put you on the spot?
Yeah.
If you had one word to describe your class, what would it be?
I would say resilient. I think we've really, yeah, a lot of people say that, but I think it's, it's really true. We've kind of, we've become a lot closer because of everything, you know, not just COVID, but going through all of high school together and gotten a lot closer this year. And really people have pushed through, become a lot better people, grown a lot. So I've seen that from everyone, so I'm proud of, proud of our class, yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Any other questions for Madeline?
Can I just pipe in really quickly about the, the AP test?
Oh, yeah.
You know, so as a person who's taken a lot of tests throughout my time, I'll say that, you know, it's not just about the test, right? It's about the anxiety leading up to the test and so, it's more than the one, two, four or five hours that the actual testing time is, right? So, you know, I think we just need to be cognizant of anxiety and all of that. And I would be in favor of giving the students a break after a test like that. And then Madeline, thank you so much. I wish we got more time together on the school committee, but thank you for presenting to us and all your work and best of luck.
Thank you so much.
I just had a question.
Yeah.
Have you guys talked to the administration about the AP test?
I met with Dr. Misucci.
What is the, what is the, what is the view of the administration?
I'm not quite sure. Your current practice is the result of the high school principal who thinks it's important that students reengage with their learning after they're done with the AP test, that they don't miss a class and cause further disruption.
Or skip a class.
Or, or skip a class.
Thank you.
I totally understand the like cognitive lift that happens with taking AP as well as all the anxiety that accompanies all of that. And one might say the students like sort of deserve to have a chance to breathe after experiencing such a heavy exam. And they opted into that experience, they studied for it, they're done and they're going to like cruise right into the normalcy of the rest of their school day so that the rest of their teachers kind of get to have the best part of their classroom communities as well. So duly noted.
Would you say, Alison, that operationally there are some challenges with that? Having large groups of students who then might be gone for the rest of the day?
Yeah, so we talk about AP students taking calculus, you know, AP tests so that they're not attending the rest of their classes the rest of the day. There's both operational challenges as well as some, obviously some educational questions in terms of the rest of courses that they're taking. So open to more conversation about it. And it's not in, it's not out of a lack of recognition around, you know, the, the experience of AP test-taking certainly. It, it's more about sort of like the larger school community and potential disruptions.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks, Madeline. Take care.
Alison, could I invite you back?
Totally.
And invite Nicole and Yuting up as well to talk about a trip to Taiwan. And this was, I think you had a preliminary presentation to the committee previously and you were contemplating the idea of a trip to Taiwan. My understanding is you want to come back and talk about that in a more substantive way.
Correct. So this is sort of take two. Thanks for reflecting with us on this wonderful idea of an experience for students to, that we can talk in detail about for those who weren't present for that conversation. It's really to kind of fill a void that's been left with the absence of the China Exchange Program over the last few years. And so Yuting, I think that's incredible work, sort of piecing together a trip that we are seeking your approval to see before in order to then know whether or not to invest time in preparing for this experience for kids. So Nicole Haggas is our World Language Department Chair. Yuting Wong is our Mandarin teacher. Would it be helpful to have sort of a broad overview, since I know for some it's a bit repetitive and I know you have the paperwork, but maybe a summary of kind of what the experience would look like?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there is a document in the folder as well.
I saw that. That's great. Thank you.
I'll leave it to you then. Okay. So the trip will begin in April break and one week before April break, so it's a two weeks. And the purpose of the trip is to enrich our Mandarin program and provide students with the emerging experiences. So we have the language classes and the culture experiences and the tour. And we work with the, Winza is a world language college. They have provided the Mandarin classes for more than 20 years and for the high school and the colleges all over the world. And so this time, they, they, they were, they were, they don't, they don't stay with the host family because Taiwan still had the concern of the COVID. So they will stay in the hotel, yeah. But they will have a language classes and they will go to the high school for two or three days. So they, they will have the high school experiences. And the college, they, the, the, the college, the, the college program, they will provide the bilingual tour guide. So the tour will have the English and the Mandarin.
So I just wanted to, can I go off what Yuting said? It said that it's really important to us to be able to offer our Mandarin students an experience. Currently, the last time I was here, we approved the Spain trip. We had two really successful trips this past April. Went to France and, and went to Italy for our Latin program. So this is another reason we just, we want to make sure that all of our students who take a world language can have, can have an authentic international experience.
Anybody have any questions?
No. I guess the only question is, and I know I talked about this last time a little bit, but so it's two weeks and I totally understand the need for that length of time. What's the plan for that extra week that kids will miss of their other classes? I feel like that's a little bit of a logistics nightmare for kids, but I'm sure you have a plan, so.
I mean, it wouldn't be the first time that students have missed some school in order to engage in one of these kind of international trips. We try to as best as possible minimize the additional absences, but sometimes it's unavoidable due to travel and things. And if you're going to head all the way to Taiwan, let's make it two full weeks. So I think, you know, a key part of the plan is the students who are, who are investing in this, communicating regularly with it. Our teachers will know who the students are, who will be gone.
Okay.
And working with their students, on the students really, to work with their teachers to develop a plan around either completing work early, completing somewhere along their way, establishing flexible deadlines when necessary. But because it's a school-sponsored trip, you know, we really want to work collaboratively with one another in, in all of the departments to make sure that it's a doable experience for students, both kind of leading up to it as well as when they return, so.
Good question. And I do have a question on the cost and I should have looked at the finance book prior to this meeting, so I apologize. I see it's approximately $4,600. Will the district be covering any of that or is that on the families participating?
Yeah, some families.
Okay. Thank you.
Christina, do you have-
Yeah, what do we do if a family can't afford to pay that?
So I'll, I'll take this question. So this past year, my colleague Sarah Longjulier took approved students to, to France, a costly trip as well, around the same price. And actually we did a lot of fundraising and we, we had actually one student whose almost entire tuition was, was covered. So we actually make it the responsibility of all the students going and we ask them to help fundraise to do different events. And that's something that we've been really, that we've had a lot of success with, especially this past year. We reach out to the community, we reach out to businesses to try to, to try to get people to help and people to pitch in so that we can, we can allow, you know, open up the, the range of students that can go. It's, it's really important to us. And by planning, and by planning, the earlier that we can plan, it gives us the families more opportunity to save, save the money, so that's why we're coming to you so early.
I just checked on the State Department website. Taiwan is a level one, no precautions country, so I'm comfortable with that.
I was gonna say, are we voting?
We are.
Ever done or thought about doing like an auction for these trips? As a, like an online auction or something like that? You know, if they go out to the community and might be able to boost some revenue that way. Not revenue, but funds that way.
We sold a lot of calendars for the middle school trip in our house.
Oh, yes.
They have printed calendars. Yeah, I mean, creative fundraising ideas always welcome. One of the most creative fundraising ideas that Sarah came up with was she hemmed pants. So a lot of them are sewing clubs. So, you know, there's ways of pulling in money bit by bit. And what actually heartened me so much about this most recent effort was all the students really shared in that desire to make sure that the trip was as accessible to everybody else as possible. So everybody was participating in all the fundraising efforts. So, so I think the cohort that went really felt connected with one another as well. But yes, new and, new and interesting ideas would be welcome.
I have no, does anyone have more questions? I think that we approved the Wayland High School trip to Taiwan in April of 2024 as submitted. My second. Okay, we will do a vote by roll call. Christina?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Ellen?
No.
Erin, get it?
Yes.
You have to come back and show us pictures now.
Of course.
So I have two very quick things that are not on here that because, well, one happened today and Christina mentioned the other one, I wanted to highlight them. So Christina, you had mentioned the emergency drills that happened at Clay Pit in Locur. And those are drills that all of our schools are doing over the course of the spring. I can't remember the date for Happy Hollow. I know Happy Hollow is doing, the elementary schools all plan to do similar drills, but weren't necessarily doing them at the same time. I really appreciate the support of the Women's Police Department and Fire Department, in particular Shane Bowles, who's the School Resource Officer. He's been the point person who's worked with the schools to help plan those drills. And so I've heard very positive things about that. The principals have done a great job in trying to balance. We want, we want kids and adults to be prepared in, in the case that an emergency situation happens. And we don't want practicing for an emergency situation to create really high anxiety as well. The principals have been working with Shane Bowles, I think, to really balance that in age-appropriate ways at the different, at the different levels. So Christina, I appreciated you highlighting that because that's something that a lot of work has gone into at the school levels. And today was our staff recognition ceremony here at the high school. That is a time each year when we come together and we honor our retirees and we honor people who have achieved milestones in the district in terms of the number of years of service. So for example, we had four staff members who we recognized who've been in the district for 30 years. And we had a number of retirees. The, their administrators give speeches about each of the retirees and it was, it's a wonderful event. It's a time of the year when everyone is tired and everyone's working hard. There's still a lot to do, but the opportunity to come together and to recognize people who've worked so hard for the, for the students and families of the district is really, it's a really powerful event. And I want to make sure that I, I'm not going to list all of their names, but, but our retirees just very important to recognize them. And finally, and I know Erin, this is one of your favorite topics to talk about, and that is Super Wednesdays. And if you don't mind, I'm going to give just a very quick history of Super Wednesdays and the reasons why we have, have historically had Super Wednesdays. We had them for the last four years, three or four years. So these are Wednesdays when, so every Wednesday, as everyone knows, kids get out a little bit earlier. These are four Wednesdays when kids get out much earlier. And the reason for this is to provide professional development opportunities for teachers. This is wonderful at the middle and high school and it is particularly important and impactful at the elementary level. Our elementary calendar on Wednesdays is very full. We have five Wednesdays in the fall and five Wednesdays in the spring when our elementary teachers participate in parent-teacher conferences. They have a variety of other activities that they participate. But right now, one of the things they're doing is planning the class compositions for next year and teachers are very involved in that process. So there are a limited number of days over the course of the school year when in particular our, our elementary teachers can participate in not just professional development, but sustained professional development, where they have a really big chunk of time and where they have opportunities to collaborate with each other, which is in my experience, the most powerful type of professional learning. So the creation of this Super Wednesdays was an attempt to give that extended amount of collaborative time for all of our teachers, but particularly our elementary teachers. Going into next year, we have a new elementary writing program that was recently implemented and there's still work to do around that. There will be work that will happen over the course of the summer, but thinking about how we continue to support teachers with that in the future next year. And on an even larger scale, the implementation of the Bridges Math Curriculum at the elementary level next year and trying to find as much time as possible for our teachers to be working with each other in collaborative teams to explore that curriculum, to get the support they need to be able to effectively implement that curriculum. So the Super Wednesdays, these super early release Wednesdays are valuable opportunities for teachers to get that, that training. I know that it can be burdensome for families because it means days when families are responsible for, particularly at the elementary level, when the families, their, their kids leave school at 11:30. And so that means figuring out childcare, that makes things more challenging. The fact though, that, that kids are leaving at 11:30 means that we have each of those Wednesdays a two and a half hour chunk of time for teachers to be working. Wednesdays a two-and-a-half hour chunk of time for teachers to be working together. So I feel very strongly that these are incredibly important opportunities for our teachers to get the support that they need. And so I am coming to you, after all of that, to ask to approve Super Wednesdays for next year. The school committee is in charge of the calendar. And I'm going to make a proposal, and I recognize that this might be a proposal that the committee is disinclined to approve, but this is something that the principals really stressed, in particular the elementary principals. So we've traditionally had four Super Wednesdays over the course of the year, and so I have four dates when I would propose that there'd be Super Wednesdays in next year's calendar. The elementary principals really asked if there's any opportunity to have more than four Super Wednesdays because of the math curriculum implementation. So I'd like to give you the four Super Wednesday dates that the principals all agreed would make the most sense to them, and then I'd like to give you two additional dates for the school committee to potentially consider. So the dates, and this is a little bit of a change from prior years. Usually we have one kind of late September, early October, one November, one in maybe like end of December or January, and then one shortly before February vacation. Because we're implementing this new math curriculum, the principals felt it was really important to try to frontload these Super Wednesdays as much as possible, to start them as early in the year as possible. So the four dates, and one thing that, and when we pick Super Wednesday dates, we try to avoid weeks when there is already some sort of interruption, a holiday or something else that's going on. And I believe in this case, we were able to avoid that with all of these proposed dates. So the four dates that are proposed are September thirteenth, so it's very early in the year, October fourth, November fifteenth, which is the week before the week of Thanksgiving, and then December sixth, which is kind of sandwiched between Thanksgiving and the winter break. Then, if the committee is open to the possibility of additional Super Wednesday dates, the other two dates that the principals agreed on was January tenth and February seventh.
Couple of questions, Perry. October fourth is right after Rosh Hashanah. Just saying. I mean, if this calendar and...
There's not?
For twenty-twenty... Oh, is this three to twenty-twenty-four?
This is a different calendar. That's a totally different calendar. Okay, fine.
This is the wrong calendar.
Wrong calendar.
Yep.
We have twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four.
It's not in there.
Oh, it's not in there.
Yeah.
Sorry, Perry.
No worries.
And are you saying that if we were only going to approve four, you want the four early ones?
Yes. Yes, please.
I'd be remiss if I didn't reiterate, this is a nightmare for working parents.
Yes.
I mean, you're talking like literally a week of vacation, right? Because it's four days off. I have to take these days off for my kids. I understand the need, but I did want to state that for the record.
And that is, that is feedback that we have gotten from other families as well, that it is very...
Right, and I'm speaking on behalf of many parents.
Yep.
This is quite a sacrifice for working parents.
So if we were to approve five instead of six, would that be?
Better than four?
Better than four, yes? Or, okay.
I think that's a reasonable compromise.
I just, my feeling is that I hear you on the needs around the two new programs and I understand all the different constraints. So, and I also am on the flip side of that, that I am a working parent and it can be a total nightmare. But in the spirit of trying to do kind of what's best for everybody, I would be in favor of doing five versus six or four, if the committee might be willing to entertain that idea.
So I have a question, Perry. In addition to the Super Wednesdays that you're proposing, would be used for implementing the two new curricula that we are launching next year, what other items would be included at these?
At the elementary level, that's it.
That would be it, okay.
There might be a little bit of writing, but there would definitely be, I mean, writing, writing we piloted back in the fall and then implemented district-wide in January, I believe, starting in January. So it has been rolled out, but there's still work to do, but math is where this would go at the elementary level, yes.
And then what about the secondary?
So middle school and high school is typically up to the middle school principal and the high school principal to figure out how to use those. They tend to be focused on big initiatives that they're doing over the course of the year. Allison's not still here, I would ask her what she has in mind. So that tends to be, it's more discretionary than middle school and high school to support them.
In that same vein, is there a way for us, maybe more of a logistical nightmare, I get it, but is there a way for us to do five at the elementary level and four at the high school and middle school level?
So that is an interesting question. Tom, the, so the question is, on Super Wednesdays, if we had more at the elementary level, but fewer at the middle and high school, from a busing standpoint, because the elementary gets, goes home first, that operationally could be possible, or am I, am I wrong with that?
It would have to be later than normal because the buses would not have cleared the secondary run by then.
So what I mean is, so, oh, yes. Well, no, so let's say on, let's say on a Wednesday, elementary gets out at eleven-thirty. Normally then, middle school, high school would get out at?
One-thirty.
One-thirty, I think.
Yep.
But if instead it was the high school doesn't get out until the two-twenty, I think-ish, is when the high school would, on a typical Wednesday. So there would be more of a window of time for the buses to get back. Does that, does that create a problem for first students?
As long as we have time, we'll go back.
So I think that that is, I think that's logistically feasible.
So is it, so obviously the middle school kids and the high school kids are not as much of a parental issue, right?
Right.
As the elementary kids are, right?
Right.
But is it, just in terms of education, like, because they're, the kids are missing
They're missing some time.
Time on learning, I think it's what you guys call it, right? So I guess I think it's better to have as few, as little loss of time on learning as possible, if that's, I guess, the way I would look at it, which would argue for a parent.
Yeah, and I think that's the, I mean, with these sorts of things, that's always the trade-off, is kids are now in class less time with teachers and the trade-off is, but teachers have the opportunity to be better prepared for when the kids are in the classroom. And at the middle and high school level, particularly at the high school, the amount of time the kids have, A, is prescribed by state law, there's the nine-hundred-and-ninety-hour rule, which we would be fine with, with this. And, yeah, having, having kids in class as much time as possible is always a good thing.
So I like, I like Erin's suggestion.
Can I ask another question? So I understand these are super early Wednesdays for professional development, but I feel like, I don't know if it's just me, but it seems like there are more. Like, the last day of school is also a super early release.
Thank you.
So...
The Wednesday before Thanksgiving and the last day of school, kids are released on the same schedule, there's not professional development that happens during that time, and that's been historical, I believe. Is that right? That the, there's the, like at the elementary, the eleven-thirty dismissal. So we don't use that time for professional development, but that is, you are right, that that is, in fact, I think when we implemented Super Wednesdays, we used that dismissal time as the model to figure out what time we thought would make sense to keep it consistent.
I think that's a lot to ask for on the last day of school and on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, to have them engage in PD, though.
I've, I've kind of viewed those as like half-days for staff and kids always, right?
Right.
No, that wasn't my point. My point is, like, for working parents, it sounds like we're asking for five Super Wednesdays, but really we have seven Super Wednesdays, just from a, I need to take care of my kids perspective. That's, that's all I'm trying to say.
Yep, yep, you're right. There's, it's either six or seven days when parents, yeah, have to accommodate their kids getting out much earlier. That's absolute truth.
If there's no further discussion.
So I feel like I want to ask teachers questions and it feels weird that they're there.
We don't typically, don't teach it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so I understand. So we're looking at the staff development, and this is not, this is staff development that's typically outside of the window of possibility in the early release Wednesday days, correct?
Yeah, so when we provide, there are lots of ways in which we provide professional learning opportunities for teachers, and to be able to get all teachers together or all the teachers in the school together at the same time, it means it needs to happen within contractual time. And these are the only real opportunities to do that for, you know, like an extended amount of time.
I guess my only other thing would be, I like my idea, but I don't want to create a precedent. I, my idea is kind of rooted in the fact that we've got these big programs that are rolling out, and I definitely appreciate the need for the teachers to be able to kind of all be together, and for the elementary, that's tough. And so if we were to entertain this for the next school year, I just don't want to have to be at a point where we want, we have to always do five at the elementary level or so.
Is this something that you want to decide now? Is it something you want to mull over for the next meeting?
I think, I think I would phrase, do we move? Yes.
We do.
You will have to focus.
I will phrase the, I will phrase the motion to accommodate what you just said. So I move that we approve an exception to the four Super Wednesday rule for the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four school year to accommodate the rollout of the math curriculum at the elementary level. Four. An exception for, for an ex, one extra day, one extra Super Wednesday in the twenty-twenty... Okay, I'll do it again. That we create an exception to the four Super Wednesday rule and allow for a, an additional Super Wednesday for the elementary level, teachers, students, whoever, in the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four school year to accommodate the rollout of the new math. Is that covered?
That works for me.
Does that, I kind of have another question.
Oh, wow, go ahead.
But I don't want you to have to do that again.
No, it's okay.
Can I ask my question?
Yeah, you can.
We don't have to restart that. I guess my brain just thinks creatively. Have we ever given thought to like one full day where the children are not in school, the students are not in school, and it's purely dedicated to staff development? And that's in lieu of two or three Super Wednesdays?
Many districts do it that way.
So that is, that is a very creative way to approach it, and the answer is yes, that is something that's discussed. One of the consequences of that is that we have added a date to the teacher's contract. And so that's something that will need to be negotiated.
Okay.
Because you can count it as a school day, go to school until eleven.
I was thinking of students, not as teachers, sorry.
Yeah, so, so one hundred and eighty days for kids, one hundred and eighty-two-point-five days for teachers, they report two days before the kids arrive and then work a half-day after that. So if you do what you just said, the kids are still in one-eighty, but now teachers are working one hundred and eighty-three-point-five days.
And a school day is a school day if the kids are in school until eleven.
That's right. I do know that well.
So it counts as one of those one-hundred-and-eighty days.
I do know that well, in June. Got to count back those days, okay. Can I second Ellen's motion? Or does she need to restate it?
You may.
I'd like to second Ellen's motion.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarifying question before the committee votes? The days I proposed were September thirteenth, October fourth, November fifteenth, and December sixth. I'm assuming that those are the four dates that the committee...
The first four that you want, yeah.
And then adding January tenth as a fifth date at the elementary level.
It's fine, yes. You can, that will be included in my motion.
Would that be the preference, would they want, would they want two months in between the December and February?
My assumption is that they would want to wait until, they would want to have that January tenth date and not wait until February seventh. I'm happy, though, however, to follow up with the elementary principals and I can come back to a future meeting and ask to change the specific date.
Seems reasonable.
Okay.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Christina?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Erin? Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right.
And that is it for my acting superintendent's testimony.
Yes. Would you like to present us with the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year calendar?
Do I have that?
That is in our folder.
That's the one I was looking for.
Yes, that's what you guys were looking at.
I was too. I was hoping for some long weekends, I was surprised. That's what the dates were, they were on Fridays.
I apologize, I have not looked through this with a careful eye. Are you hoping that I will speak to the calendar?
I don't think we need you to speak to it. I did confirm that the teachers have seen it and blessed it. Union. So we just need to vote on it, unless anybody has any, anybody at the table has any feedback. We start for...
No, first day of classes is the day after every day, but the, the transition day with six and nine is before every day.
Yes, you're correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a good schedule. You don't, you never, you never know.
No, I know. Okay, does anybody have any questions? I do not. Christina, are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. I move that we approve the twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five school calendar as presented.
Second.
There you go. Okay, we will roll call vote. Christina?
Yes.
Erin Muller?
Yes.
Ellen Greco?
Yes.
Erin Gavitt?
Yeah.
All right. Next up is that we approved the release with redactions, the following executive session minutes, January, at our last meeting on May tenth, January fourth, twenty-twenty-three, January ninth, twenty-twenty-three, January eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, January eighteen, twenty-twenty-three, number one and number two, January twenty-five, number one and number two of twenty-twenty-three, February eighth, twenty-twenty-three, March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, and March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three. All right, so next up is my matter, so...
So just to clarify to the public, that was just an announcement of something that we did.
Correct.
An executive session, so the public knows about it. Just...
Yes.
Making that clear.
So as all four of you are aware, we have an empty chair and a vacancy has been created by the resignation of Jess Palazotti after our last meeting. I am working in conjunction with the Chair of the Select Board and the Town Manager and his office to get this all figured out for scheduling a joint meeting to...
Is it June fifth?
We're trying to confirm that.
Okay.
Yep. Potentially June fifth at the Select Board meeting. And what I'd like to do is discuss with the three of you, a communication, it was posted, I should take a step back, it was posted with the town on the website by the Select Board, on the Town Manager's Office on May nineteenth.
People have seen it, because people have...
Yes. Yeah. And so what I'd like to do is kind of get your blessing as a committee to work on a joint communication to be sent out by the Select Board and us, notifying the public of this vacancy, how people can submit their interest. They must be a registered voter and Wayland resident. And so I have put in our folder an example announcement from the town of Situate. And, so if you all just want to take a look at that...
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, just literally...
I'm good with you doing that.
Okay, all right. Mr. McCall has requested that we give them a deadline of next Wednesday to get their...
Interest.
Interest to us and the Select Board. And then... And then we haven't like finalized the process. We'd like to kind of see how it turns out for how many people show interest.
The only question I wondered is, I don't, didn't follow the posting. So do we ask people to like give information about themselves?
A resume.
So should we include that in this, in your notice so that people...
So we have to do two communications?
No, 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 yes. I think it would be just one communication to please provide a resume. This was just an example, so you guys could see what I was kind of thinking. And then we'll just work with the Town Manager's Office to get it out through all the different portals. So does anybody have any questions on that piece specifically? Do we want to take a...
Do we need to vote?
Maybe take a vote to...
Do you want me to ask you? We can, I think technically, appoint two people to help with the communication. Do you want somebody to help you from the committee to assist with that?
Sure.
Are you good on your own?
I don't think it's going to be a heavy lift. But if somebody else wants to be involved, I'm more than happy to.
I'm happy to join you as backup if you need help.
Okay, so do we want to take a vote just to appoint?
I move that we appoint Erin and Erin.
It'll be easy, we can just like, "Thank you, Erin." We don't even have to specify.
To work with the Town Manager and the Board of Selectmen about an announcement about the school committee chair vacancy. School committee vacancy. School committee refilling the school committee vacancy.
Does Christina need to second this?
That is, yes. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll roll call. Christina?
Yes.
Erin Muller?
Yes.
Ellen Rico?
Yes.
Erin Gibb?
Yes. You could have seconded it yourself. You could vote for yourself.
Oh, you're voting for myself, it feels weird.
You can't do that.
Okay.
So the other two that I wanted to discuss with you guys are that we appoint individuals to various committees and boards in town. And three positions are up as of June 30, 2023. Those are the three-year term, one position on the Wayland Housing Partnership, and two three-year terms on the Youth Advisory Committee. We have previously sent out communications to the community through various means that Diane Marabella knows how to do.
Are these vacancies because the people who are currently doing this are not interested in continuing?
So they are vacancies that we must...
Post.
Post.
But those people might be interested.
One, Malcolm Astley has said that he feels like it's time for new blood in his position. So I thanked him for his service. And then Pam Cern, I have not heard from. She's our other current representative on the Youth Advisory Committee. And Krista Bona is the Wayland Housing Partnership, and I just have not had a chance to reach out to her, so.
So these, so we need to do this by the end of June?
Yes, I actually am going to reach out to the Town Manager's Office because they were looking for our appointed members by June 14th. And I just don't see that happening. Based on the timeline, so...
So I think we should move forward with whatever we need to do.
Yes, okay. So Erin, would you like to work with me on that as well?
Sure.
Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion?
Do we need a motion?
I don't know, I just wanted...
Okay, I move that we appoint Erin and Erin to... We're all just, you know, figuring out, following all the appropriate procedural steps regarding the vacancies and appointments.
I'll second that, Erin.
Yeah. That will include the school committee too, so all of the vacancies and appointments.
Okay.
All right, roll call.
Roll call.
Yes.
Dina?
Yes.
Erin Muller?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Erin Gibb?
Yes.
Okay. Fabulous.
Erin, can I mention something really quickly?
Yeah, sure.
I'm looking at that sample Situate...
Yeah.
Thing. I think something is the bold part, the position of school committee to fill a vacancy for the remainder of the term. It's not technically the remainder of the term. It's till the next town election.
Well, it's...
For Jessica's D, they're the same thing, but the language isn't...
If you read the next sentence, it says "The term will expire at the 2024 annual town election."
Yeah, this term, I guess that's okay.
But we're not tied to that language.
It's just an example.
Okay.
I hear you.
Everybody got others?
Good.
Okay. Anybody want to approve consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All right, roll call. Christina?
Yes.[1665.62]